This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular September 16, 2024 council meetings to order at 7:00 PM. All rise for the pleasure of these.
6:30 Rick.
Oh, 6:30, I'm sorry.
We have changed.
Thank you. Like an old dog.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here tonight, and so we'll move on. Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, I would like to make a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Adams?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Move right into presentations, we have one tonight. Jay, if you want to.
I didn't realize I was going to be the first one. I represent the Brannania Pioneer Museum. And we have a request to be able to display the bell and whistle from the Che locomotive, which from what I understand has been in storage in the city warehouse for many, many years. We are an independent entity, we're not part of the county, even though we operate the county museum. So the whistle and the bell would not become county property. But we would be able to put it inside. We'll have to build a mounting rack for it, and until I see how big it is, I have no idea what that would look like. And we will actually screw it into a post inside the museum and provide suitable signage. So what I'm looking for is an approval for the city to do, to allow us to display that. Putting it back on the Che will just mean that it'll disappear one night.
Yeah.
So, and I'd like to be able to show it off. And so basically, that's what I'm asking for.
Hey Jay, I've got a picture of it that's 20 inch by six inch diameter.
Six inch diameter?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, that'll be a piece of cake. So.
That's the bell?
Yeah.
Well, the whistle.
Oh, yeah, because we're.
Did you measure the bell? What's the bell?
No, I didn't measure the bell.
Oh.
We were talking about the bell.
Yeah, the bell, we were put the bell on and then the whistle above it. And our, that's going to work out, but I believe.
So I think the bell is yay on the yay.
Okay.
Like a school bell?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not. Why not just think of a school bell? We can have it.
If this, if there's another bell down there at a water plant, I don't have it on it. I just asked Chris about it.
Yes, there's a bell and whistle in the crates. There should be, and the lens, and the lens of the light should be there too.
I don't know.
Oh, the lens for the lights there too.
Yep.
All crated, I know that's not something to display, but I'm saying that's what, all those pieces should be up above.
Yeah.
Where you measured the other pieces.
Okay, the whistle was in a crate by itself.
Yeah, there's multiple crates, so we should go up and decipher. If council blesses it, then staff can get you up there to.
And we could volunteer to help put the compressor back on the, on the locomotive also, which should be on the side there. There's just a gaping hole there with some old hole.
Yeah, so we could, if council's for it, then staff can move forward with the pioneer team and get moving.
Yeah, when you came, oh, a couple of months ago approached me on this, that, you know, I, and I could, I think I could speak for the council that our main concern was that we wanted to be good stewards of the, of that bell and whistle, and we didn't, we didn't want to.
And with that in mind.
Put it in jeopardy for theft or anything like that. But I like your plan about having it displayed within the museum. My personal opinion, I think it's great, it's, it would be more valuable to the community where people could see it in the museum than in our warehouse.
Right. And, and we would not catalog it with the county property. And we're, we're an independent agency, so to speak, so we're not under the county's thumb that way.
Would be a loan.
Pardon me?
We would record it as a loan from the state.
Yeah, as a loan.
Yeah, on loan, yeah.
But it would not, you know, it would not end up, because supposedly, everything up there belongs to the county, so. But we could keep that separate.
Apparently, if you, if you misopen up the compressor, and if there's adequate pressure, it's so loud, it's deafening within earshot.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure of that, but it's a steam whistle.
You said it was steam.
Yeah, air, air will make it sound, but not the same. Steam expands like 1700 times what compressed air does.
So you're saying to be even louder, Jay?
Oh, yeah, it would be, it would be pretty good, you know.
It would take a pretty good.
Six inches of that, that's, that's a healthy whistle.
It would take a jackhammer compressor, a big compressor to.
Yeah, to even make it sound reasonable, yeah. Yeah, because once you put steam through it, why, it expands through there, and it just, you know, it sounds amazing.
It's in good condition and a crate, the whistle. The bell, I believe, is what I looked at, and it's, it looks fine too, it's just.
We would be able to shine it up and make it look really nice.
Yeah.
And it would stay nice being it was inside. So, that's all we're, we're asking for permission to do that.
Councilor Webb, too.
Probably make a motion.
Yeah.
To have the bell and whistle be on loan to the Pioneer Museum, that's, wait, it's a vote. And then we can get with them and get them to the items and get whatever signed paperwork we need to do between the two parties.
Sure.
If you guys are, to vote for it.
Salute.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, guys. And you don't have.
Guys are sure welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to by any means.
Well, you gotta try to rest of that, and I don't think anybody here is, so.
Yeah.
We're all upstairs.
I mean, we could brag about, we could find something to brag about.
Okay, have a good night.
Good night.
Be in touch.
Tomorrow? Yeah. Free says.
Is, no, it was Kennedy.
Yeah.
But can we do this? Here?
Let me, let me get with it, because I think I have a construction meeting, but I don't know the time. I'll get, I'll text you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Toby.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night. Mayor's report. Citizens of the month.
Next meeting. They weren't made aware that tonight it was coming to the, to us, so they're going to be here on the 7th. Yes.
Okay, council committee meeting report. I have one, if nobody else does. Went to the senior board meeting last Friday, September 13th. Real good meeting, just. Talking about bargains in Bridge Street, they still have a half price off for all their items. That seemed to boost their sales a little bit, the last couple of months have been kind of lacking a little bit, but that, that has helped them. They hope to go back to being open on Mondays here pretty soon, so they'll be open from 12 to 4, five days a week. But right now, they're just open Tuesday through Friday. The new, and he, he likes to be referred to as Chef Jack.
Nice, you like it?
Really well, and people are really happy, and I attended the senior picnic last month, and great food. And so things are going really good down there at the senior center. So that's all I have to reply on that one. So, any topics from the floor?
I have one, Jared Cook.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, I just had a quick request for information. I was, I noticed that the American Rescue Plan Act afforded, shoot, it was Oregon, it was 10.2 million? Or no, it was 160 million to Oregon, 10.2 million for Columbia County. And this is where the data got a little conflicting. It was $506,359 for Brannania, but when I looked into the budget, it was more like $800,000. And I was just wondering if any of that is earmarked or like what, because physically, Scapoose, Scotts and I, St. Allens, they were all getting money, and there was like, nobody could figure out what they were doing, so I was wondering.
So we have had a plan for it, it's almost all spent out to this point. The reason there's the discrepancy between the 800 and what you found is because part of, there's $150,000 that was an American Rescue Plan Act fund, a grant, that went to the food bank through, the city was the partner, and they got $150,000 to buy shelf-stable protein, like care items, bleach for all the patrons that use the food bank, shampoo, conditioner, right, so we just went through and got as much for the community as we could with that. 400 and I believe 6,000 of it is what we're using to connect North and South Louisiana, and we're getting a new water main in three of the blocks there, so we'll have new where the development stops to our new stuff in Louisiana, so the entirety will be new water main. And then we're connecting those two roads, so there's about 500 feet of base, and then building up and grading so that that's a buildable road so that we can pave it someday. And then the rest of our money went to, we tested all 200 manholes with vacuum testing for sewer INI issues. We used that money to also then have a grouting project where we grouted 50 manholes to reduce the INI of the groundwater infiltration. And there's a few other like $10,000 to $20,000 things that I'd have to get back to you. I know they're there, but I can't pull them off the top of my head that came out of that budget line item, but I think, I'm not going to hazard a guess, I'd rather send you a list, but that's what we did with the majority of our money here. Yeah.
Yeah, because like, Scapoose, they were talking about raises for their employees as well as like more, more.
Yeah.
I think it was a lot of it all to their police force.
Yeah. None of ours came into our general fund budget at all, yeah.
Oh, yeah, because I noticed it was separated.
Yeah.
This is contract services.
Oh, yeah, no.
That's the outward.
It was a real contractor if we listed that. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, library board meeting minutes for May 2024. And public works committee meeting minutes for June 2024. Any questions or discussions? Those two meeting minutes? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
So moved, thanks, Councilor Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Ash seconded.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then one more, consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for September 3, 2024.
I'm meant to accept the consent agenda for approval.
So moved by Council Wagner. Second.
What's even here?
Oh, you want to hear it, oh, okay, I'll second it. You can't second it?
Feels weird.
I'll second it.
I have Webb.
Okay.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? Okay, moving right into new business, staff report, city project list addition.
So Stephanie gracefully amended our list with some blank spots for during your discussion, what you guys have consensus on being added will be written in the blank spots, and then you'll take it home and rate them, because she left your rating. And then we do have two that we put down, not wanting you to rank them because they're near complete, and that is the PRV removal, because it doesn't have to be removed anymore. It's just going to sit in the ground because we did the new water main. And then the Bear Creek Culvert at Adams is part of the project that's nearly done, but we didn't want to say it was done until the paving happens, and the striping of the bridge is requested by Public Works Committee. So we don't want you to rank it, but those two are bound to be done pretty soon. And then we're proposing the removal of the wage analysis step charts and drug testing. We could tweak it to just a wage study if that's still something you guys want, but the insurance company said unless we adopt a drug testing program or there's an accident, those are the only two ways now you drug test in the state of Oregon under our insurance company. We don't have a program yet, if that's something you guys want to build, we can. So I don't know, it was a kind of a Council Allen request, and then we kind of left it on there because Sam Potter had questioned some stuff at Public Works Committee and wanting some wage stuff, but we kind of have not done it because we fear it's going to show, we're paying people under what the counterparts are making, but we could, whatever you will with that. So those are, that's what we're presenting to you, and then you guys are going to add whatever projects you all agree on.
Dale, you have one?
Well, I have several, but.
Okay. Well, I've got one, I only have one to add. Should I start?
It's, you guys amongst yourselves, when you agree, we'll write them down.
I'd, I'd like to have a workshop on Title III. And specifically talking about Chapter 3, dash 03, property maintenance control. And I'd like to include Eva in that workshop, and just to generally talk about what's going on presently in, in the city limits. It's a little vague in this chapter, it mostly talks about dwellings. And, so I'd, I'd like to maybe discuss that and come up with maybe something that would be helpful that if we were presented with a large abatement, that it wouldn't cost Brannania a whole bunch of money. And so I think it's needed, I think it could be tweaked a little bit, or add some things to it. So that would be a workshop on Title III.
Oh, refresh my memory on Title III, we're talking about abatement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we need to put a workshop, though, on here? I think we would wait and see what comes out of the workshop if it's a.
Project.
Project.
Yeah, initially get a workshop started to.
Right, but we can.
Whatever comes out of that, so.
Yeah, you can call for anything, it's not a project, it's not really a project.
Could result in one, but.
So I'm putting that as, we need to, staff needs to bring.
Staff report.
A staff report to schedule a workshop on Title III.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd have, like to have Eva included in.
Yeah.
And of course you.
Yeah, all staff that is, yep, got it.
Want me to?
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
All right. So I think we need to develop a timber management plan. I don't know if we develop it or we, we end up with one, that's what the end goal would be. And so we should debate this, whether we want to put this on the list or not here, right?
Yeah.
Because I don't think we have, we don't have anything currently, we're just kind of winging it as we go. I think more thoughtful process, kind of lined out, I mean, I would kind of like to try to get the Forestry Class involved a little bit in brainstorming and what's, what would be the best practice for what the city timberlands that we have? And, and, you know, I mean, there's always to flesh that out, you know, whether you're going to cut it out, how are you going to play the markets? You know, how.
An inventory, well, just even the base inventory of what exists, what condition, what cut ability is it? Do we need to thin it?
Yeah.
Right, all of that, yeah.
When we did our Herbert Growth Boundary Switch, we were left with some nice timber up there.
Yeah, that came out, yeah.
Potentially that close to 100 acres.
Yep.
City will have.
Yeah.
I think that's a smart idea. I think that's a smart idea.
I agree, the story has a really excellent plan, and I followed along with that over the years, and it's been really interesting in how they've managed it, it's been very, very effective.
So do you guys want to do, like, is there, can, if there's one, like, give us consensus so we can put it down? Or you want to do the, what are you agreeing to at the end?
One of those, fine.
One of, not the motion.
Each one?
Yeah.
So do we need to agree on the workshop, or we're already good on that?
No, workshop, we're just scheduling, if a project comes out of it, you guys could put it on a later time.
Okay.
But the timber management plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thumbs up for me.
So we're writing these down, right?
Yep.
If you want it ranked.
Yeah.
Happen otherwise.
Yeah, a couple more, Dale?
Yeah. So, we're going to start managing our timber, and we're probably close to starting. Depending on how our plan works out, we'll be getting close to actually doing something. Well, another one of my portfolios is there. So we need to start thinking about the timber fund and how we use that. Well, how do we use those funds? To give the, you know, not only, you know, it's, this council can come up with the ideas, but I'm sure it can be amended in the future, it'd probably just be in a resolution form or whatever, but if we adopt a, a fund, I have some ideas, but I'm not going to tell you that tonight, because I think that's, everybody can think about how we use these funds that we derive from our timberlands.
Would that not be partly in the, in the plan? Wouldn't you develop that?
I guess you could incorporate that into that.
I think that being in one document is super valuable for the city, so the me in the future doesn't have to search for two, a policy and a plan, the plan includes what intent was of the council at the time of the policy.
I just kind of separated how you manage your timber from how you manage your revenues from your timber in the two different silos, but they can be.
But I think how you're going to cut it is going to matter, then you'll know what you're going to maybe, the hits, the moments in time where you'll have the funds, so you know how the timing of the fund coming in would happen, and then you know how better to use it, whether you're going to hold it for 10 years and the plan is then you start, you know, or what. But I think one, both of them drive each other kind of, in my view, but that's just me.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that as long as, as long as that's part of the timber management plan, and it's, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
We've got timber, land, and fund management.
There you go.
There you go.
All put together.
And this one, I guess this one, I don't know if this needs to be a project on or we disperse, but we've been talking about it, is, is the logging of the dump lands. You know, the clock's kind of ticking, getting access to the well or property, you got trees growing, so the longer we wait, there's going to probably be a point where there's going to have to be some compensation to get to our timber on that lower section.
Yeah.
And the other ones, ticking time bomb as they're growing and they're getting too big.
Ours.
We're going to lose value if we get too big.
Well, yeah, we're going to send it, lose our value sending it to a big mill.
Yeah.
Down south or something, yeah.
Gets oversized and the small mills can't mill it.
Yeah.
Actually, the value goes down a little, so.
Are you guys, is there consensus for that to be a project that we start working on and assessing the timing?
I could see it separate from the timber.
Oh, yeah, I think it's its own logging.
Yeah.
Just like Aura was, or just like, yeah, the mill site logging.
Talking about it for a couple of years now.
Susan, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thumbs up for me.
Yes, I think it's on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, logging of dump site.
Yep.
Dump lands.
Yeah.
Property?
Yeah.
Property.
It's the one of them, but.
Sheree, you have one?
Um, I don't know if mine warrants being put on the list because it's smaller, but I know it also takes staff time, and so if it's helpful to have it on the list, I'm supportive of that. I would like to see the conics finally painted, I know there's aspirations to have it muralized, but I think in the meantime, if it was like foresty green color, I would really, really, really love it so much.
Yeah.
So it would be, sometimes it's nice to put the smaller projects on and get that satisfactory checkmark, so.
It's whatever you guys want, we had already talked about it, yeah.
That's a very good idea, doing a, doing a generic.
Just want to blend in for now instead of the conics.
Because we had talked about having trees painted on it, so it just looked like, it looked like trees, but, yeah, but we should just get it a base green.
I'll go hold some paint chips up.
Yeah. Well, we were talking about going one of the three sets of green that's in the city logo, just so that it's replicatable, and we have those colors of paint on hand, so if someone tagged it or something, we can just go cover it pretty quick.
Thumbs up for me.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just think it's something that should just be done, I don't know if we got to directly get it on the priority list, but if you want it on the list, we'll put her down there.
Well, you can share things that just need to be done, too.
Yeah.
What is it?
I don't have nothing put on the list.
Oh, okay.
The painting, I mean.
Yeah. Well, we can, I mean.
It's kind of a small.
It is.
Thing that could probably get accomplished without.
Yeah.
On this list.
Yeah, will.
Okay.
But the more things we give them that aren't on the list, and then we go, why isn't the list getting done? You know, I don't know, I'm fine either way.
You want it on.
I want it painted, that's all I really want.
She wants it here, so she, if it's not painted in a timely manner, she can be like, it's on the list, and it's braked at this, right? Which is fine, I think.
It's on the list.
It doesn't have to go on the list.
It can be on the list, just leave it. It can be on the list, just leave it, I'll get it done.
Put it on the list.
Susan, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Not at this time.
You walked in the door.
I got three additional items, timberland, trenchment, logging of the dump site property, and late conics paint.
Yep.
And then we're going to bring you back the staff report on scheduling a workshop for Title III.
Yep. Good.
And are they adopting.
Hi.
Here tonight, Steph? Is that what you wanted?
So you're going to rank them one through 28. That's what I counted.
Okay.
And then turn it back into me, I think I gave you Monday.
Yes.
We are sorry.
For the 20.
So in my staff report, Monday, September 23rd, so that I can bring it back to production in October.
For the 7th?
Yeah.
Okay. So by the 23rd.
Yeah.
Week from today.
Yep.
Got you.
It's accomplishable.
Okay.
Just an update, Steve. We've moved the meetings to start at 6:30 instead of 7:00.
I know, but I'm like, you have a mechanic in my truck.
Okay, just making sure.
I couldn't, I couldn't meet here.
And the, the mayor, at the next meeting, they're going to schedule a workshop to go over Title III and talk about the properties, that's the big title, and talk about the properties in town and the nuisance code and stuff in a work session. So we can let you know when that comes, gets scheduled.
Yeah.
Oh, really good.
Okay. Thanks, Stephanie, and thanks for printing out a copy we could see. Okay, library board application. Elizabeth Nilo?
Mello.
Mello?
Mello.
Mello, okay.
The library board voted to enter, so.
Yeah.
She raised a complaint.
Everyone has seen her application. Any questions on, she goes by Betsy, I guess, Betsy Nilo. Well, if there's no questions or discussions, if I have to consent from the council on this application. I will appoint Betsy Nilo to the library board. Congratulations, Betsy. Your new position there. Any business from the departments? Okay. Assistant Resolution.
Yeah.
Any correspondence? City Administrator.
All right. So the docks, they have about two and a half weeks left of their construction and they won't get shipped to us until Oregon Marine Construction is lined up to offload, float them over and anchor them with their scuba diver. But we're working on, the anchors got put in for floating our old docks over to their new spots. I'm working with Mike to help me yard the ramps out of, onto the bank so that we can put the grating on and then we can unhook and float over the old docks to their new homes. We're also working with Robert Watts to kind of prepare kind of a landing because it's kind of steep and how they're going to get down to them. So he's working up his estimate for that. So those are kind of on track for what they stated with their delivery. No new changes to the ADA project. I've been paying attention to their weekly construction meetings. They have like a one hour Zoom that I play in the background just so I can hear if anything's going on. And then following, so we have Brown Counting, is who got the ADA ramp project for Forest Grove, Rainier, Vernonia, and Gaston. And so they're, like I said, they're going to set up like a little concrete batch plant at the old country kitchen, that gravel lot there. So they'll, depending on how quickly it goes in Rainier, they may not get here till March, they may get here sometime before that. We're just kind of playing it by ear. The roads slated for chip sealing were nearly complete when I wrote this. We have received a few complaints that the chip sealing wasn't as smooth as the citizens As you guys know, the streets, and this is more for the public's information, the streets that were chip sealed along the east side of town cannot be asphalted until the water mains in those streets are replaced. We did the chip sealing to lay down a new wear surface and lessen the potholes, but it's not as smooth as asphalt and it does have minimal rises and falls. It's a quarter of the cost and long, a longer term temporary service, surface. So what we did talk about with Chris is where we do have, because I know there's one on Elm and I know there's a depression area on Alder, is now that we have the chip seal, his plan is to go in and cold patch those lows because the cold patch will actually adhere to the chip seal if they wouldn't have to the gravel base before chip seal. So that's the plan. Those ones have been identified to get cold patch following their construction. I didn't have an update for the Louisiana North South at this point. I will, I think I've filled in almost everybody. The trenching on Adams caused way, it had a lot of liquefaction in the soils, which caused their coffin, on the outside of their coffin, which is the plating that goes in to keep them safe, it started collapsing and failing outside. So his five foot trench patch of paving in some areas is 17 feet of a 30 foot street. So we were talking about how do we make this right? Those, some of it is on us because who knew what was in there? Even if he had potted this trench, the areas outside kind of failed. And then what is his? So we kind of did a map. Robert, the engineer, and I went out there with a rag tape and measured all the square we thought were his. And ultimately about 40% because we only, also, the manholes stop closer, further away from the highway than we had anticipated. We anticipated going all the way to the highway, then across both lanes at a 45. We're moving towards boring under the highway to avoid digging up 18 feet deep on both lanes of a state highway and then having to try and restore that, right, going into the rainy season. So he's getting boring numbers. So the savings on that and the boring, right, that's the game we're playing right now. What's left, what savings doesn't he have to do if he doesn't have to have highway flaggers for all those hours and he doesn't have to have this? What's coming down on the bid versus what the boring cost is going up? And we're seeing what that ugly number is. We're waiting for our final boring estimate because their original plan was to go in with the 30 inch casing because they were worried about skipping along the top of the rock layer and they were going to drive the 30 inch casing down, right? Because with the bigger casing, they can force, put force on it. The new numbers that proposing, now that he figured out and they did a whole bunch of test patches, you'll see him if you drive down Park Drive, they dug a whole bunch of spots, is they're going to come from Shea and go with a smaller casing. So he's redoing his numbers. On Thursday, we'll know what the ugly number is. We believe even if it's an increase of what the budget was, the financing we already procured should cover it, but that's the game we're playing. But part of that is we stopped short, we stopped probably 30 feet short of the highway. But if we're going to pave, we want the whole street paved. It's not SCA, we don't have any risk in touching the highways right of way because it's not their money. So he's paying for 40% of the pave, which is what we figured in square footage. We're paying for the 60% because we have both lanes going down the sides plus the 30 feet back in full width from bridge to where he stopped messing up the concrete or the asphalt. So that's all, that's all in the works. Part of the benefit of that is grinding the three inches off of that, what still exists, that material, because Knife River shut down Oak Ranch to two days a week and we can't get enough three quarter inch minus for the projects. We don't want the projects to cost overrun because the citizens don't have more money. So we're taking the grindings and we're stockpiling them up at Louisiana and Peel's going to use that as his top. So he's going to work that into his one and a half inch minus as the surfacing for that. So that money comes off his bid, right? So it's all a number game. And then they're grinding three inches and then we're going to overlay the whole of Adams. So we've popped all the valve canisters, fixed all the clean outs. West Oregon Electric came and fixed their cramped conduit, so we're ready. They're grinding tomorrow and paving Thursday. So that's all connected to North South Louisiana because that's the thing I was on because he's using the material up there from the grindings. He should be getting started up there. There's a little work going on North Louisiana. They're hooking up the, our guys are hooking up the last three water connections onto the new main. Not all of them got switched over when they were up there originally because Robert kind of got pulled off for the excavating. That should be getting moving. We have till December and Peel's assured us it's not going to take him into November because it's just not super difficult. The VPD union negotiations, they sent us our proposed change, City Legal proposed back a change, so now the ball's in their court. They're reviewing it with the union members and they'll either accept it or they'll propose something different that Ruben will review. And that's all related to, should the staffing's levels be low? They don't want their guys not being able to take the time and not losing the time. So it's all about that. That's the only change they requested was clarifying that when our numbers are really low and we don't allow them to take vacation, they don't want their members losing it should they not be able to take it in a timely manner. Springboard projects, so we're pretty good, everything's going good with that. He decided to skip Hawkins Park and waiting for all the boring work and estimates and he's going into Dennis Weller's Field next. And so he won't have Hawkins Park dug up for a salmon festival. So he's bouncing to Weller's Field and up that way and then he'll come back, do the boring and all the connecting to it. There is one house on Park Drive that will be putting kind of a sewer, little sewer main for their connections because getting through the casing at 18 feet deep to connect them to the new, we're just going to take them back to the Park Drive manhole on their own. Their laterals will end at a clean out and they'll be responsible the same way they had been from that line back. That's just going to be the most, there's no point in boring it if you then have to dig down to it and cut a hole in it to hook someone's sewer up. So we're not, we're trying to not recreate more problems for ourselves. So yeah, that's what's happening with that. And then DEQ, I have, we've sent our response, I sent it to you guys. We have not heard back, but they said it could take them 30 to 45 days to get a response once they see ours and kind of flesh out all the things we're saying are problematic. And that's all I have. Do you guys have anything for me or questions?
I'm good.
This Joseph's got a lot on her plate right now.
Yeah.
Sometimes I feel, I, Stephanie and I had this discussion that sometimes when I'm talking, I just blackout and I'm like blah, 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 blah about the project and I'm like, did I say all of it right? Like, you never know, there's too many things in the penium forum.
Okay, well, I don't have any. Thank you, Joseph. Okay, items from the mayor and council. Ready for the salmon festival? Less than two weeks. Exciting time. I can give you an update on the, one thing on our priority list, the new welcome sign to Vernonia. I've been working on that lately with Pacific Stainless and, and digital graffiti and another company that did the, the wrap and the graphics on the metal. So I'm still waiting to get a, a bid from that. And then once I get a bid and what it'll look like, I'll bring it to the, this body and look at it and go from there, but I'm excited about it. So, those things take time, especially when, you know, three or four people have their hands on it. Anyway, that's all I have. What else? Okay, well, action item summary.
Okay. Staff's going to get with the Pioneer Museum group and get them the items and get the agreement or whatever we have to sign to put something online. I don't know anything about that, but it'll be great. Staff's going to look into getting Mr. Gardner to fix the black chairs so we don't waste our money and we have them usable for time to come. Staff's going to bring back a staff report for the work session scheduling on Title III and we'll notify Betsy Nilo, Mello.
She says Mello.
Mello, of her appointment to the library board.
Very good.
Anything else?
And then you'll have your citizens on.
Yes, I.
On the 7th then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll have the call hooked to them tomorrow.
Okay. Well, thank you for all attending tonight and I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:16 PM. Meeting adjourned.